Good.
Okay. I got a minute. Oh, it's not online. Okay. We got 5:30.
Good evening. It's 5:30. It's time to call the commission meeting. Would you please stand and as we recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, commissioners, have you had a chance to look at the agenda? Do you have any modifications to that?
I have and I have none.
I've reviewed it and, Mayor, I'd like to remove item E and F from the consent agenda and bring it to items for commission action.
All right, that is items E and F. Okay, duly noted. Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as modified.
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. All right, next on the agenda, I call for a motion for an executive session. I move that we recess for an executive session for discussion of possible acquisition of real estate for economic development purposes pursuant to the preliminary discussion on acquisition of real estate exception, KSA 75-4319B6. The meeting, this will be for 15 minutes and the meeting will resume at 6:49?
Five.
Or 5:49, I'm sorry. Excuse me. 5:49 and attending will be the commissioners Jeff, Kelly, Lacy and Chuck Goode.
And David.
And David.
I'll second the motion.
Go ahead.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Aye, motion carried. All right, we're back into session from our executive session and there was no action taken. So moving forward, we're looking at appointments. Item A, the Independence Historical Preservation and Research Commission has two resignations. The application date has been extended to noon on April 30th, 2021. So I encourage citizens out there that maybe if you've not served on a board before or you have in the past and you would like to get back involved with helping the city out, consider applying for a position on a particular board. Item B, the land bank board of trustees. We have, we're looking for seven new members. The application is due by noon on April 30th, 2021. This is a newly formed board and we're looking for people with certain experience to bring to the land bank to help get this up and running. So I'm going to encourage all of you that show interest in this. We are, we are looking for someone, some of the positions we are looking for, Kelly, were one that would be financial, real estate.
I think we got a Realtor and we had a banker in here.
Okay. Someone with legal and construction.
Yes.
Construction background. Those are some of the positions that we are critically looking at that we would like to have people with expertise in those particular fields on this board. So if you have those credentials and you're interested in serving the city, we'd appreciate that you would go and file an application and so we could consider your appointment to these boards. Thank you very much. All right, item four, public hearings. We are going to open it up, a public hearing regarding a proposed loan in an amount not to exceed $3,800,000 to be taken by the City of Independence from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund. How are you today, sir?
I am fine. How are you gentlemen doing?
Good, thank you.
Thank you for, for having me here this evening. First of all, I'd like to thank the city for allowing us to team up with them and have this opportunity to do this project. We appreciate the opportunity. My name is Chuck Mitchell. I'm with PEC, Professional Engineering Consultants, and we were hired by the city to do the preliminary engineering report, the design and the SRF loan application for this project. So just let me hand out one thing here real quick. Give a quick background on, on the project itself. Okay, so just a quick rundown of where the project is located. It's actually in two areas. One is on Peter Pan Road. That's the simplest portion of it. It's just really a cross connection of the water line on the west side and the east side. There is not a map for that because it was just kind of one little short line. But this one right here is the bulk of the project. You can see it's kind of on the north. Limits up by the school. The south limit is kind of the railroad track and the east side is north, 10th Street and the west boundary would be 13th Street. So it's that neighborhood in there, various little streets and runs where the water line will be replaced. So what we're looking at doing is it's approximately 6,100 linear feet replacement of existing two inch, four inch and six inch water lines with eight inch PVC. And the second component of the project consists of about 4,400 meter replacements with AMI meters, which are advanced metering systems. Currently, the, the water lines that you have are steel and cast iron. They're about 70 years old, way past their design life. I know you've spent some money on repairs and maintenance and that sort of thing. So that's one reason we want to, to replace those as well as the meters that are anywhere from nine to 30 years old. So what it does for the city on the replacement of the water lines, it improves distribution reliability, improves water pressure and flow, obviously. It allows some flexibility. If you have some leaks in that area, you can isolate some of the lines without, you know, shutting off all the customers because we'll incorporate valves in certain areas where we can isolate different sections so you don't have to cut down the water service to any, to customers. And obviously, it's going to reduce the repair and maintenance costs of the existing lines. The replacement of the meters, the AMI meters, which are remote meters, gives more accurate readings. It gives you a real-time meter reading. It eliminates your city staff from going and physically reading each single meter that exists. I think you guys are on a two-cycle billing cycle right now where you read half the meters, half a month and bill and then the other half, the second half of the month. So this will eliminate that. You can read it real-time right there from wherever the, the system is set up and get accurate readings, which is a big help. And it also, you know, it improves overall management of the city water system. You can tell a lot about what's going on. You can see if there's leaks from the meter to the house by looking at water usage. So a lot of benefits for that. Where we're at in the process right now, we're in the process of, after tonight's meeting, it's approved, then we'll submit the SRF State Revolving Fund loan application to KDHE for the 3.9, or $3.8 million for the project. And it's usually about a, and it really depends on their backlog. Usually it's 30 to 60 days best timing for them to look at that and approve it. Worst case could be 90. You never know. It just depends on the backlog at the time we submit it in. But we'll track that and push that and help expedite it however we can. The timing of the project, we're looking at, the survey is almost complete. We should have the final survey. If not tomorrow, the first of next week, we'll start the design process. Looking at having plans completed, final plans to submit to KDHE probably in November of this year. We're going to try to push that up, you know, expedite that as fast as we can. And then KDHE again, you know, depends on their backlog. It could be two months. It could be six months. But what we hope to have is a bid to go out in the spring of 2022, start construction in the spring as well, awarded in the spring and be completed with the project by the end of 2022. So with that, without getting into deep details, are there any questions or that I can, can help answer?
Yeah, is there anyone from the public? This is a public hearing that would like to come up and address the commission. All right, then I'm going to close the, the public hearing. I, I do have a couple of questions. Maybe I've, I think maybe this graph will, will tell me. These water meters, they'll be, that signal will go to a collector?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then that'll go to like a, like a main collector that they all communicate to? So if they can't communicate to one particular, they'll find one that's open that they can connect to, communicate with?
Yes, and I'll be open and honest. Our AMI guy, couldn't be here tonight, who's more advanced in that than I am, can probably answer that a little better. But yeah, it comes to a single source and you can read it, you know, with the software that's, that's in place and, and there's a lot of things you can do with the software. But yes, you can, it should come to one central location. There'll be little towers around that are able to accept the signal. How many that is, we don't know now. Once they start putting them in, then they'll go around at that time and kind of locate where they have good signals to make sure the signal coverage is good and it relays it back to one system.
Okay. The other part, on the water meter itself, what would be the program capabilities of that? Will we be able to, I'll just ask, what's the capability of that meter? Being it's an AMI meter, water meter, will be able to, to turn on and off? Is that part of the package? Or are we just looking at taking accumulative meter reads from these water meters?
Yeah, at this point, I think it's just the, the reading. I'm not exactly sure if they have a component that allows you to shut it off, I think is your question. We're, we're going to check in on that and, you know, if that's something that they provide and if we, working with John, if that's within the budget, then, you know, we obviously can make sure that, that's put in as well.
Okay. And this is not really new technology. It's been around, AMI's been around for a considerable length of time. So I've talked to other, another smaller community that was able to go in and replace all their water lines and then they went with an AMI meter, Badger Meter Company. Anyway, they had good results from that. They were able to, to improve their system, of course, and that made them able to read the meters in a, you know, relatively short period of time, cut down on manpower. So it worked out good for them. So I'm looking for something along that line to help the city also. It'd be a good fit. So I'm going to open it up to questions from both of my commissioners here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are the lines going to be replaced in the street? Are you going to do a right-of-way replacement of the line?
Yeah, we're projecting that it's all going to be in the street. There may be some pieces that, that are behind the curb, just depending on the existing utilities and how close they are. But right now, I mean, we haven't got the survey in, but just from the city maps that we have, most likely they're going to go in the street.
So then we'll, instead of boring the line, we'll be excavating the street and doing street repairs?
That, that's most likely what's going to happen, yes, sir. Yeah. We're not, we're not proposing to get any additional right-of-way. We're going to keep it in the right-of-way, whether it's in the street or behind the curb. But there's a lot of big trees and sidewalks and it's probably easier to just replace it in the street. But we'll look at that and see, once we get the survey, which will be the best and most cost-efficient way of doing it, yeah.
I think when we replace the line along 10th Street, we moved it to the right-of-way. So I didn't know, looking at here, if that was going to be a trend or just go by what's in the right-of-way to be disturbed, would that be the guiding factor? It's kind of a cross. When you put it in the street and have a problem, now you're excavating in the street instead of just dirt.
Yeah.
Are the two projects linked at the same time so that where you're putting in the new lines, of course, you'll be setting new meters and we'll be setting automated meters in that area first at the same?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it will all take place at the same time, yes. They'll be going around and putting meters in where we're not doing the line work. But yes, the project will be all happening at one time or simultaneously. Yeah.
And just a general question is probably for John and Lacy, but funding to repay the, the loan, that will come from enterprise funds from Water Sewer. It's not a tax element. Am I correct on that?
I believe that's correct.
If you notice, I was looking for Lacy. I believe they come from existing water revenues, but if that is not the case, I will inform the commission.
Okay. It seemed like when we talked about it earlier, that was the original plan when we were adjusting rates. I just, looking for confirmation, we were still on that. So you'll report back to us?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Well, thank you, John. And that was all my, my questions, so.
Just one quick one, and it's, has to do with the water line itself. You said steel and cast iron pipes have a lifespan and many of ours in installed lines are past that lifespan. What is the projected lifespan of the new PVC line?
You know, PVC, it, it can last, you know, 50 years and it can last longer than that. I mean, the steel and cast iron's been in the ground 70 years. I know it still has issues, but, you know, the life expectancy of PVC is, is considerably longer than your cast iron and your steel, depending on the corrosivity of the soils, which I don't know that you have any here, but PVC will, you know, it's the new way anymore. You very seldom see any steel or cast iron pipe go in anywhere. It's all PVC. That's about the best product you can get for water line.
Thank you.
And one other question, as far as the AMI metering for the water meters, as far as that quantity of water meters, that's not an issue as far as supply? I mean, they're, they're readily available and there's not an issue in, in ordering that amount of meters retrofitted with AMI?
That, that's a good question. I don't think there's going to be an issue with it, but I will definitely check into that to make sure that there's not going to be an issue with that. We haven't heard anything that there was at this point.
Sure. Okay. All right, then, if there's no further questions, gentlemen?
I have no further questions.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Yes, you're welcome. All right, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-013, authorizing completion of the loan application and the execution and delivery of the loan documents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Nick? You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Item B, a public hearing to consider condemnation of 418 South Wald Avenue as dangerous and unsafe. And I'm going to open this up to the public. If the owner of the property or someone representing the owner is here, if they would like to approach the podium, identify themselves and have some comments, anyone? All right. Anyone here representing the owner? All right, then I will close the public hearing.
Tyler needs to present.
Tyler? Hi, Tyler, how are you?
Hi, I'm doing good, thank you.
Good.
City staff would like to recommend condemning 418 South Wald as dangerous and unsafe.
Mayor, you might remember, this house was involved in a structure fire. This, we also just removed the house to the south, which we had condemned earlier. And you've noticed, the owner has moved all of that property and stuck it behind the property. Our code enforcement has, is in the process of enforcing that. And Tyler can tell you that the owner has done some painting on the front of the house, but he has not addressed anything with the fire damage. And you, it is not really habitable in that back part of the house.
No, it's not.
We've tried to get timelines and we're just having no response from the owner.
Have we been able to, to get inside the house to look in the interior?
I have not been inside the house and I saw a few pictures that were taken right after the house fire.
And we're basically getting no response from the, the owner?
Correct.
The house. We are visiting with him. He has been told to give us timelines and he was told to be here tonight, but we do not get any response. And I believe they still try to reside in the front part of the house. I mean, but there's no insurance, there's no, nothing. And it's, it's, the back portion is in very bad shape.
Okay. I'm familiar with the property in that area, so, well, that's unfortunate just by looking at the pictures and it looks like they've just transferred items, found another place to place the abandoned cars and wrecked cars and everything else on the property. So it is definitely a nuisance and an eyesore, so. Tyler, I think you gentlemen?
So you said they're living?
He's, he's there, Leonard, I, or Commissioner, whether he's staying there or not, they are there, in and out. But as you can see from the pictures, the back is unsecured, it's open, no attempts to do anything or respond to any of our requests. And he, we told him what was, where we were headed, to condemn the structure and we went through this similar process with the other house, back and forth.
So this is a, this action will be condemnation of the entire structure, not just fire damage?
Yeah, we're going to clear the entire structure and clear the lot.
So this could be a multi-phased removal?
Yeah, typically when there are vehicles and stuff like that, we bid it and the contractor will remove everything.
And our action could be involved more than just first action is we condemn the structure because it's unsafe and then address the other issues?
Yeah, yeah. He's pretty good because he moved all this over here as soon as the contractor showed up to move, remove the other house. So I anticipate when we show up to do the other, he'll relocate again.
Well, I hope he makes contact that we can work.
Tyler's able to visit with him, so Tyler will be able to communicate to him what's going on. I mean, we communicated right up till we removed the other house to make sure we had no problems. In fact, the contractor had Tyler go down when he came over and so we made sure it was a peaceful and
Good.
Process.
David, you indicated that the house is occupied, but are utilities on, water and electric on as well?
I know there's no gas or electric.
There's no water either.
Well, it's unusual that we condemn a house that is occupied. That is normally one of the first questions we ask is, is this occupied and is there power connected to it? But this one is?
There's no utilities and it's not in the condition to be occupied. But we cannot tell an owner what he can do in a house, correct, Jeff? Whether he's in or out?
Yeah, I mean, to a point, there's some ordinances to address safety.
Yeah. There's no kids involved in this. These are adults.
That's what I guess I was alluding, first we have to look, our first step is addressing it as unsafe.
Yeah. Yeah, well, if you, if you, gentlemen condemn it, we will go back and visit with him, address what the process is. He has 30 days from a condemnation to appeal.
Or start work.
Start work. So he'll have 30 days to start that and after that point, we will go out for bids. Those bids would come back to you. So I mean, we're talking 90 days that we can work with the owner?
Sure.
To ensure that this is a peaceful process and taken care of.
And we've had cases, I think, that once we've condemned, they have given you schedules?
Yes.
And they have turned the property around and we've come back and
Yes, absolutely.
Sent it to condemnation.
Yeah.
All right, any, any further questions?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
I'm fine.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-011, condemning 418 South Wald Avenue as dangerous and unsafe.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Moving on to item five, consent agenda. We do have some modifications to this consent agenda where we have, we're going to remove E and F and put them in items for commission action. So knowing that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with those changes?
Aye, so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. All right, moving right along. Item A, item six, item for commission action. A, consider a proclamation honoring fallen Independence Police
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Will we consider the consent agenda items first or last?
I'm going to consider them last.
Last, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Item A, consider a proclamation honoring fallen Independence Police Department Assistant Chief Charles C.A. McKinney. Chief Harrison, how are you this evening?
Good, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to present this to you guys. On March 21st of 1920, Independence Police Department suffered the loss of Assistant Chief Charles C.A. McKinney. He was mortally wounded in the 100 block of East Main Street here in town and his story was lost to history until local newspaper reporter Andy Taylor submitted an article about the shooting to me. Got Captain Lisa Helkenberg involved and we reached out, working with Andy, Nancy Kishpa, some other local historians with the museum, the library, and then we ended up reaching down into Texas, got connected with a distant relative, some librarians down in Crosby, Texas, where C.A. McKinney was from. And we were able to research this case and have, number one, bring this, his sacrifice to light for the citizens of Independence. And I think it's tragic that his story was lost to history for over 100, it's 101 years now. And the, the great news is though, that this year, we, we nominated him for inclusion on the Kansas Law Enforcement Memorial and on the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. And he, he will be, his name will be etched in stone on both those memorials and those ceremonies will take place in October this year due to the pandemic. So that's the exciting news. And there's, there's quite a story to this, more to come. But tonight, we're just here to start the story and, and recognize his sacrifice to our community.
Thank you, Chief. It's great that this was brought to the forefront by the Chronicle, something that is an important part of the history of Independence and that Mr. McKinney, Charles C.A. McKinney, will finally be recognized for his sacrifice to the community as part of the law enforcement. And I'm pleased to hear that his name will be added both at the state and national level. And this will give the relatives of Mr. McKinney that are still living the chance to honor him and to recognize him for his sacrifice that he made to the community. And I think being, this has been something that's been buried for such a long time. I think I would like to go ahead and read this proclamation.
Certainly, I would appreciate that, sir.
So, whereas the Independence Police Department's own Assistant Chief Charles C.A. McKinney was mortally wounded in the line of duty on March 21st, 1920, whereas Assistant Chief McKinney was beloved husband, brother, U.S. Army veteran and public servant who was with the Independence Police Department for about a year before giving the ultimate sacrifice. Whereas Assistant Chief McKinney's name will be added to the Kansas Law Enforcement Memorial, Topeka, Kansas, and the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, Washington, D.C. in 2021. Whereas the Independence community remembers the courage, humility and sacrifice of Assistant Chief McKinney, giving purpose to his sacrifice and creating a legacy for our fallen hero. Whereas we honor Assistant Chief McKinney and his family by ensuring his sacrifice is no longer lost to history. And we remember and share his legacy with a new generation of independent citizens. Now therefore, I, Louis C. Sissy, Mayor of the City of Independence, do hereby honor and remember the courage and sacrifice of Assistant Chief Charles C.A. McKinney during National Police Week, May 2021. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Independence to be affixed, done at the City of Independence this 22nd day of April, 2021. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, excuse me, I would like to entertain a, a motion on this.
I move to honor the sacrifice of Independence Assistant Chief Charles C.A. McKinney and authorize the mayor to sign the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Item B, consider proclaiming May 9th through May 15th, 2021, as Police Week. Chief?
Mayor, many people may or may not be aware that in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed the legislation recognizing May 15th and the week that it occurs in as National Police Week. So tonight, I'm coming to you asking for a proclamation in honor of that legislation and to recognize the sacrifice and service of our local heroes that, that work hard to serve the citizens of Independence.
All right, Chief, thank you. We live in a very critical, dangerous time in our country right now, considering law And it's something that concern, it should concern every one in the United States, every There's going to be a lot of soul-searching, but one thing that we need to continue to do is recognize that we can't no longer paint a broad brush and put people in a certain category. You know, you're always going to have, when you have an organization, organization like this, whether it's police or whatever, you know, there's obviously going to be some issues that will present themselves, but But the majority of law enforcement, they go out and do the job every day in spite of the obstacles and the pressure that are put on them. So I do not want to denigrate those that do an honorable job of doing that. So I think we just need to, to appreciate what we have. We will work and rectify those persistent problems that we have in law enforcement. But kudos to all those that serve. It's, it's a very critical, important job, a very dangerous job, and I wish them all well. And I appreciate you coming up here and presenting this proclamation to us, Chief.
All right, and I appreciate your support. And I'm, I think all the officers in the Independence Police Department recognize that we're fortunate to serve in this community where we do have a really strong relationship with our community and with our local media and all the stakeholders that we serve. And I, and we're very grateful for that. And there's a lot of places where the police don't have that. So I certainly appreciate your support.
You're welcome, Chief. Commissioners, would you like to make a call in?
Chief Harrison, I just think it's very fitting and proper that we recognize our officers in this way and align with this national recognition as well, as the, as we recognize that they are public servants and are risking quite a bit to be that. So thank you.
Chief, I appreciate your leadership in the Police Department and your proaction on a lot of situations. Your establishment of your Citizens Advisory Committee. I think this proclamation not only recognizes the officers that have chose to serve, but I think for Independence, it's a recognition that our officers are trying to reach the community and be sensitive to their needs. And you, as a leader, have set that example to them. And, and I, I think Independence is unique in your leadership and the commitment of your officers. And, you know, for us as a commission, it's a privilege that we have to present this proclamation recognizing your commitment to the citizens and to your, your department.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your support and kind words. And I know the officers, it's definitely meaningful to them too, particularly in these times. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. All right, do I have a motion on this?
I move to proclaim May ninth through May fifteenth as Police Week in Independence in recognition of the commitment to excellence the members of the Independence Police Department demonstrate every day.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Item C, consider proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month.
I don't, don't see April here, but this is something that we do every year. So staff recommends that you approve the proclamation.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, any comments?
I have none.
Good to go. Then, do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the attached proclamation declaring April two thousand twenty-one as Fair Housing Month.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Item D, consider approving the RFP, RFQ for Construction Manager at Risk for Phase Two, nineteen sixteen City Hall and Fire EMS Facilities.
I believe Vance is on the telephone and can answer any questions or we all can answer any questions you guys may have.
And we did send out that description to add to this. So what's in your packet would be modified by adding that description of Phase Two.
That was of the additional things to consider that weren't part of the original.
Yes.
Plan that.
Yes.
Communication tower and that. Okay, got you. Vance, are you there?
I am, Mayor, yes.
All right, good to hear from you this evening.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, gentlemen, I'm going to let you open this up for questions while I try to navigate here on my computer.
Now, it looks like everyone did a, a good job putting together a well-described RFQ and RFP for what we're looking at to develop the, the, the team between the city, trainer, H.L., and Construction Manager at Risk. That's it?
That's it. Commissioner Hayes?
I don't have the entire RFP in front of me right now. But included in the RFP is a timeline, am I correct? Of steps through which the, the RFP will sequence. Do you have it?
Yes, that is correct. There, we do have a timeline of when we put this out, when we receive it, review it, have and eventually bring it back to the commission for approval. And I think then the notice receipt date is towards the end of June.
And it's scheduled, so in section one point one eight, and it goes from April twenty-third to June twenty-fourth.
June twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-one.
Well, I happen to think that the, the Construction Manager at Risk, as it has been presented to us and defined for us, is an exceptional way for us to proceed on projects of this nature. It seems like a very good way to, to steer clear of the obstacles that are frequently part of this magnitude of a construction project and, and head off early, design questions, coordination questions, producibility questions, those types of things with the Construction Manager online and involved in the process early and therefore setting those expectations and correcting for perceived and re, and real problems can, can facilitate forward motion on a project and, and get those, those things done efficiently and ultimately quicker and therefore less expensively. So I appreciate, I appreciate all of that about the Construction Manager at Risk. And I think it is, in fact, the, the way that we should manage Phase Two of the nineteen sixteen City Hall going forward. I appreciate the additional project description that Vance provided to us. I've, I've read through it and I understand that it's a potential modification for the project description, but I don't find it to be necessarily significant. So I have, I have no interest in revising that at this point unless the other commissioners or the mayor wish to do so. The timing of this is a particular consequence, I think, as a couple of very important things have to take place in the same timeframe. We haven't talked about this in, in this regard, and it's, it's not really related to this particular action that's before us. But I'll elevate it, it's this time because it, I believe, is of significance. The, the cost of Phase Two is six point five, or in excess of six point five million dollars, and does not include certain elements that are outside of the envelope of the building. So we know that it'll be in excess of any of the costs that are on the interior of the building's perimeter. So it's excess, it's, it's a cost that I demonstrated to you is, is going to create higher cost for the city in total. I did that at the January seventh meeting, and I think it still persists. That excess cost can be modified, however, and we've already talked about this, by selling the temporary City Hall Building D and using those proceeds to buy down the cost of the debt and there, and fund portions, a portion of this construction project. If that can happen in advance of the beginning of the Phase Two construction, that would be advantageous. Otherwise, if we proceed with construction and don't do that, we end up with the situation where we are in ownership of both the city halls and our need to service the, the debt service. We'll have to service the debt associated with Phase Two. So that would be a double cost of ownership, and that seems a, an onerous burden for the taxpayers. So I would hope that as we proceed and consider timing of this step and other steps for Phase Two, that we would also consider them to be contingent upon the sale of the building. So while this search for the, the right person to be a Construction Manager at Risk is, is certainly important and we should proceed with it, this timeline that's in the RFP, RFQ is, to some degree, dependent upon us taking seriously this idea that we will aggressively market Building D. In addition to that, in our investigation, we found in our walkthrough, excuse me, of the substantially complete nineteen sixteen Phase One, there is still remaining work to do with sealing the envelope and additional water infiltration, certainly in the lower level. So this would be an, also an opportune time for us to consider whether we can make Phase Two contingent during the sale. The process of selling Building D, make it contingent upon sealing the rest of the envelope, taking the steps to seal the rest of the envelope. I elevate that this evening as I think that's important as it seems the way this particular description is written, the first description is written, excludes any mention of sealing the envelope as Phase Two. And I don't think that sealing the rest of the envelope really, as it was originally described, sealing the envelope shouldn't be contingent upon Phase Two's completion. But perhaps more accurately, Phase Two should be contingent upon sealing the envelope so that we have assurances that the very reason that we left the nineteen sixteen City Hall Building behind is, is dealt with completely before we put additional monies into it to remodel it and to make it into the new City Hall, the remodeled City Hall Building. And so that timing is of significance to me. I hope it's of significance to you as well. However, it does not change the fact that I support this motion to find the right person to be a Construction Manager at Risk at the right time. Thank you.
There's just two leaks, isn't there? Two locations for leaks. Well, you know, it, I guess, been considering that since I saw the email of why hasn't that area that it's leaked been excavated to see what the cause of the leak is? You know, that would be something that we could do now.
Absolutely.
Vance, you examined the membrane earlier and you found that it was pliable. So it's reasonable to assume that major portion, except in those two locations, the membrane is in good condition. So it would be reasonable for us to excavate to find out why it's leaking in that one spot. Then we can get it fixed. There's no need of putting a unknown factor out to bid that a contractor is going to be tied to a, a fee and speculate on what he's going to find when we could dig it up and, and find and probably proceed with repairing it now. I, I think, I can't remember if it was a brush-applied membrane or a sheet membrane. What did you find, Vance, when you dug it up? Was it a, a liquid that was brushed or rolled on or was it a sheet membrane?
So Commissioner, it was a brush-to-roll-on membrane. And when we did our investigation as part of the start of Phase One, when we did our test pit, test area, we found that the granular fill where we were digging was clean, which is a good thing, so that it allows water to percolate down. We found that the membrane was pliable and seemed to be in very good condition. So our recommendation at the time was not for the city to spend money to see if additional work was necessary for the waterproofing. We had so many other locations where we knew water was entering the building from the roof, from the previous windows, from the masonry joints. But we did anticipate that as part of drawing out the building, we would be able to determine whether additional waterproofing work was, was going to be necessary. And I think that's what Commissioner Hayes is pointing out in our walkthrough. There is still moisture that we can see coming through the foundation. What we don't know, Commissioner Colish, is whether the waterproofing is terminated at certain locations that still allow water to enter the building. And so as part of Phase Two, we are anticipating that we would not only address the waterproofing around the entire perimeter, but we would also address the water that is entering the areaways, on both the north and the south. That that would be part of this Phase Two project so that you don't have an issue as part of the final renovation, that we would be buttoning up the building. My recommendation is that it be incorporated as part of Phase Two rather than a standalone project for cost reasons, for constructability reasons, that it, it should not be separated as a standalone project.
Yeah, because there are pictures, I believe, of the installation of the waterproofing. And the waterproofing was extended from grade to the, the footing, and that joint was sealed. There was a backer board put over the insulation, and then the granular fill put in, and the earth was compacted up against the granular fill as it was filled and lifts. There's cleanouts that allow you access into the perimeter pipe that you could run a camera in to check the condition of that pipe for blockage. So there is information that's available now to answer a lot of questions that you have to determine what extent needs to be, plus the locations, you know. The water, if it's just coming in at two locations, it's pretty simple solution. That it doesn't have to be completely excavated. But it, I guess I've never heard the final report on where the water was coming in, if it is continuous along all the footing. From what the contractor said, there was not any evidence of water coming up through the floor slab, which is kind of a typical problem of a building that age. So we don't have that issue. So, you know, some direction and it, it still seems like a pretty open door that could be shut and narrowed down quite a bit. But it just kind of keeps going on that if it, is it a major problem or is it a minor problem? You know, the, the one area that is beneath the stairway, the concrete stairs were removed. And, but it is. And, but it is leaking there. That's kind of a puzzle to look at. But, you know, we should have some direction of either we can do area patches or do we need to excavate the whole thing and redo it? You know, that decision seems like it could be made very quickly. And, you know, with an evident of one spot leaking, there's only one way to find out. That's remove the dirt and the gravel and the protection board and look at it to see at that spot why water's coming through. And, you know, either we excavate on our own and look at it and see, or we pay a contractor hourly to do it. But, you know, it seems like a valid concern that Commissioner Hayes has. We've got to find out the water issue, but we're not getting any closer to that resolve. And waiting, you know, we either need to know are we going to re-waterproof the whole thing? Because it was excavated. The stone foundation was cleaned prior to the application of the membrane. So it's got some pretty simple direction. We just need to make a decision and go. It needs to be resolved. The sale of the building, you know, we got the report 2015. The recommendation of the Steering Committee was to sell the building. And now we're sitting here, 2021, no closer to selling it than we were in the time the report was submitted, 2017. I don't have that date. But, you know, we seem to be waiting on a decision that we need to make so we can get it marketed. And there's options that are out there, but we've got to reach out and nothing, you know, we can go fishing and keep our fishing rod in the truck the whole time, and we'll catch as many fish as we do staying home. And that's basically what we've done with the sale of the building. We talked about it. We just need to get our information together and put it on the market. So, you know, we've got to move forward. This is a first step in moving forward. And I think we need to act tonight on this item for construction manager at risk, but get on the ball to answer those other two questions of, are we going to re-waterproof the whole foundation and go that direction? Are we going to address the two leaks and get that done? But we can't keep wondering what we're going to find. We're going to need to take action and do it. And we need to get an action of marketing the building. And we've started some plan. If it comes down to deciding how much we want to retain, make a decision and get it turned around. So basically, I think we need to, again, go ahead like Commissioner Hayes said and act on our construction manager at risk RFQ. Get it submitted. It is the best method that we're bringing the needs together by the staff, working with a design professional that understands base relationships and addressing our needs into a drawing. And the construction manager at risk takes his expertise of pricing a material and committing labor, and he helps lead the effort of making the construction come to reality.
Thank you, Commissioner Koflicz. Vance, I talked to you previously, previously before, several weeks ago about this, and it's a, and timing is everything on this. I'm in agreement with my two commissioners here. We need to find out where the leak is or the leaks are and determine how we're going to fix that. And we need to do that relatively in a quick manner. We can't continue to delay the process down the road. Timing is everything. There will be a point to where the Building D will need to be marketed, and we talked about that. And you gave your opinion on when you thought that could happen. But we're going to go ahead and move to approve this RFP, RFQ. But there are still some questions that exist that we need resolved as we continue to move forward on this. Vance?
Yes, Mayor, I certainly understand and agree. As you and I talked, I do believe by the end of schematic design, you will have the information that you need, the commissioners need, in order to market the property. By that early phase, you will know how much land around the old hospital building is available for sale. And we've talked about the corner lot also being a third designated property so you can determine whether it's in the best interest for the city to keep that corner. Or if you have an interested buyer who believes that is important for them to purchase, then you have that ability. And that's why at the end of schematic design, I believe you'll have what you need in order to market the property. Going back to historic City Hall, I do believe that moving forward with the construction manager is a part of analyzing this foundation waterproofing system and getting advice and counsel from them is important in order to determine whether we're needing to look at just specific location repair versus total replacement. And so the construction manager at risk is an important player in making that decision.
All right. As far as timeline, you're talking about the schematic design. What is the timeline on that?
So our goal would be that we would finish schematic design at approximately the same time the construction manager at risk is being brought on. So we are looking at towards the end of June for schematic design to be complete.
All right, Vance, thank you.
And just an FYI, I'm still waiting on the quote for the boundary in the TOPA survey for Cornerstone. I've not received that yet. So that's in process, but haven't received it.
All right, all right, thank you. Gentlemen, any more further questions for Vance?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, Vance, thank you very much, Kelly.
And I'll just need clarification when you make your motion, whether it's how it was presented in the RCA or if it's with the additional description to so we're clear on which one to use.
The one that's presented in the RCA was the original.
Yes, that's correct.
I'll make that into my motion.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve the RFP, RFQ for construction manager at risk for Phase Two 1916 City Hall and fire an EMS as in the original RCA.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
And would you like staff to work with Vance on putting together a plan on how to excavate around the building, whether we need to do that in-house or contract that out? Do you want us to work with Vance on that? Because he will need to be present to observe that membrane, correct, Vance?
That is correct, yes. And I do recommend that we actually do that work at the time the construction manager is actually on board. They can help coordinate that work for the city, and they can also help in the analysis of what we're seeing as we're doing excavation.
And is there, can you mark on a plan where the leaks are so we'll know where it's being addressed? And I think we can go back through some of the files on the project and see if we can find pictures in that area.
Yeah, Commissioner, any information that we can have to evaluate installation of that previous waterproofing system would be a tremendous help. Thank you.
What is the expected life of that membrane? Would it make sense to maybe review if, before all the approvals are made, if it needs to be replaced?
I don't know if it had a life expectancy. I think its elasticity was over 500%.
Okay.
So, you know, the only thing, what damage it would be, and it had a protection board. Either something happened during the rock backfill or, you know, it's not impervious to rodents if one tried to dig through or that's, you know, it's surprising. It was only in those two locations, which the settlement of the concrete steps at the entrance could have caused some movement.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah.
I'd hate to make modifications and redo the building then.
Right.
Have to come back and do some of the locations.
I used some material 30 years ago, and it's still.
Good.
Yeah, and it's even, part of it's been exposed to sunlight.
Okay, what year was it done? Do you remember?
I think 89 or 90.
Okay.
All right, so you have a direction you will work with. Vance, you will work with the.
Well, he wants to wait to get the construction manager at risk if that's how you want to follow that. And then once that's on board, then we'll work.
We'll work together with the.
Investigate that.
Right, perfect, okay. Was that your understanding, Vance?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, good. All right, Vance, thank you very much. All right, moving forward. Item E, consider awarding the contract for the removal of Taxisway B and the rehabilitation of Taxisway D and Terminal Apron at the Independence Airport. John?
Yes, thank you. Tuesday, we held the bid, and the low bidder was JLT Construction. They were within $5,000, the engineer's estimate. The submission date for the project to the FAA is May 3rd. And that's actually relatively important because this year, the FAA is, through their grant program, has eliminated for this year's funds the 10% match. They are going to cover that. Now, for the funds that will be, for the, we're using from next year's funds as well for this project. So there will be a requirement for a match, but for the entire $766,700 project, the net cost to the city will be $14,000.
Wow.
So that's a, that's some good news. Additionally, we'll be working with Textron to minimize any sort of operational impact. We've discussed them on project timing, and we've already notified the, actually, at the pre-bid, we notified the construction contractors of the likely start date, which also meshes with the minimization of the impact of Textron's operations, while not changing any cost to the city.
All right, thank you, John. Commissioners, do you have questions for John?
I'm good.
No, I have none.
All right, then, do I have a motion? Thank you, John.
I move to authorize awarding the contract and having the signing of any necessary documents for the removal of Taxisway B and the rehabilitation of Taxisway D and Terminal Apron at the Independence Airport project to JLT Contracting LLC to award the final negotiating inspection agreement contract to Lochner and to execute any other necessary documents required for the FAA grant.
Is the amount a necessary portion of that?
What was that?
I said.
It probably should be.
Yeah.
Is the, in the amount of, is that a necessary portion of it? Because I heard a different number from John earlier than I have here on my piece of paper.
Right.
We have $590,290.15 on this, and he alluded to $766,760.
And then the 700, $766,700 is the anticipated total project budget overall, including the current bid dollars. The amount that we will pay is $13,843.
Is the JLT contracting a bid?
Yes.
$590,290.15.
Yes, that is the JLT contracting amount.
He's probably adding the engineers.
Yes, I was going with the total project cost.
But can I amend my motion?
Absolutely.
I move to authorize awarding the contract and the signing of any necessary documents for the removal of Taxisway B and the rehabilitation of Taxisway D and Terminal Apron to the Independence Airport project to JLT Contracting LLC in the amount of $500,290.15.
$590.
And to award the final negotiating inspection.
It's $590,200.
There we go.
Okay. Sorry.
I had to look on my other paper.
Okay, and you left to award?
And to award the final negotiating inspection agreement contract to Lochner in the amount of, is that included in your?
You've given me that so far. I've heard that.
Okay.
And to execute any other necessary documents required for the FAA grant.
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you, John. Moving along to item F, consider authorizing the submission of an application for a KDHE solid waste grant for a reuse project. John?
KDHE has requested proposals for solid waste grants, and those are due May 15th. There are various categories that are applicable for the grant: recycling, composting, outreach and education, as well as waste reduction. The idea presented to the beautification committee was the idea of reuse. So recycling is wonderful. We take an aluminum can and we melt it down and turn it into something else. But reuse means that we're going to take something and we're going to immediately reuse it without remanufacturing it. The idea here is that we have a concrete pad. It's relatively simple. We let people come in. We let them deposit items that they are done with, but there might be items that would be useful to someone else. And then we let people take them. It's really a relatively simple idea. And the, what I have here is a suggestion that we build a concrete pad as well as a structural steel awning and covering so that the items don't get wet and allow people to periodically come in, drop items off, pick items up. And to the extent that items aren't leaving the pad, then they would have entered the waste system anyway. Then we police those items, clean the area up, and allow people to do it again. So in this way, you know, rather than recycling, we're providing direct benefit to the community.
John, the phrase comes to mind, "One man's trash is another man's treasure."
Yes, sir.
This seems like just another way for the city to facilitate collaboration and cooperation without sophisticated communication lines or any of those extra hurdles that just, if it shows up, it's free.
Yes.
And if you want it, you take it home.
Yes.
Very simple concept.
And I called up the people who I knew had run a similar operation. I found some of the problems that they'd had, and I listed those in the backing material.
I saw it.
And I was going to call them again and see what other things that they had found had been problems. But the description that I got from them was, "The people love this."
Mm-hmm, I can imagine.
It was very, very simple. I mean, they, there's a great degree of affection for this reuse concept.
Where are you proposing the location?
Right now, we're thinking in and around the sanitation area. So people who are already familiar with recycling would know where to go. We haven't drawn it out exactly yet, but.
You know, we've had discussion about a public works facility. And maybe the final location, all that should be taken into. and maybe the final location, all that should be taken into consideration. So, it works into, maybe we need to do a master plan for the future public works, recycling, so that it would be integrated into a a good spot for reuse and are you taking products yet?
You know, we have actually reviewed on the utility area. We have reused Shenoots and is waiting for John Felton to come back and then we're going to go view some other areas as well, so.
I think it's a great idea that, you know, it's as you go through an upgrade, there's a lot of products that you hate to throw away because they're still good and somebody could utilize it. You're changing out a sink or kitchen cabinets or a bath cabinet. There's so many items that are no longer serviceable or you desire, but somebody else is is looking to replace and upgrade and it's a great, a great process.
Well, it is a personal example. My son may have found at recycling a laptop computer. And indeed, he with forty dollars in parts, he upgraded it and it's his go-to laptop today. And it's, you know, he said it's equivalent of a very, very nice laptop. And then that's just, and if you look at just that one example, that's one example of a transaction where seven hundred dollars in value has been created just by reusing one product. If you did that every week, I mean, that's, you know, you're talking thousands, but I I think the numbers would be much larger than that, but I I don't have any estimates.
I think, you know, growing up from the old days, if you took something apart and had extra bolts or screws, they went into a jar because of the opportunity later on or, you know, a lamp cord. You take it off of a broken toaster because you might need the cord and the plug to fix something else. You know, this used to be a way of life that we tried to repurpose and we had to repurpose. And I think it's a good way to bring products back into use that still have a useful life to them and allow somebody else to benefit.
It's a good concept, John. I've I've heard some information from you previously about this and it's a good concept. I think it's very workable and I think like the commissioner stated, it'll give a chance to to put some of this reuse for people that are looking for piece of sheet rock or small piece of plywood or something without buying a whole sheet, they can find something like that they can use, so that's a good deal. I'm glad you brought this forward to us.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Do I have a motion on this, gentlemen?
I move to authorize application for the K D H E solid waste grant for the described reuse program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. All right. Item G, consider ordinances pertaining to consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property and authorizing the issuance of special event permits in the downtown historic district. Jeff or David?
I'll let, I mean, this is something we've been working on, trying to get a process for people to apply and we've had several requests from the downtown businesses about the alcohol. So, I'll let Jeff talk about what he's put together as far as ordinances and what we're presenting to the commission for approval tonight.
As I've mentioned many times, the alcohol laws in Kansas are archaic and we're taking baby steps here. There are some other things that are available to cities. As Leonard sent me an article, what the city of Shawnee is doing on what they call the common consumption area. And that can still be done later if the commission wanted to pursue it, but this approach I've taken here is we have a brewery now in town and it has a patio on the west side. It's expressed interest in holding events that extend on out west into the street. In order to do that, we've proposed an ordinance which has which sets forth a special event permit which would essentially allow that. City staff would make up the application based upon the guidelines in the ordinance. Kept the kept the application fee low because I think that was the commission's intent, twenty-five dollars. That's really the gist of it. We are our most amended city ordinance is city code section six dash four, which are which is our ordinance, which which basically banned alcohol on any city property. And we've gone in and amended that several times regarding the park. I had to go in and amend that to allow an exclusion for the holder of a special event. And while I was doing it, I added a section which is specifically aimed at the patio area of the brewery. So, that's really what you have in front of you.
I I did like what was forward to us earlier today, that Commissioner Keflis concerning the city of Shawnee. And I think that's something that's intriguing that I think that maybe we should look at down the road. It seems like they've been able to consider a little more in-depth on this and this might be a good process to consider and and to to go with.
Yes, a common consumption consumption area statute, I think at the last meeting I talked about it, it's somewhat new. Our immediate problem is we have a US highway that runs east to west through our downtown historic district. I don't know that the powers that be, KDOT or whoever, will allow us to close that on a regular basis for parties. I mean, we closed the reroute for New Walla and I I'm not sure that I've ever been involved in the protocol.
No, it'd be very difficult. I don't think they would. Jerry, do you think, Jerry Shickin? They wouldn't allow us to close Main Street.
In New Walla, we do a detour permit that we apply for months in advance.
Yeah. But anyway, the rest of the downtown area is free of that problem, so we'd be basically talking about north of Main Street. I think we'd have to dodge the highways.
Would would that apply to a restricted area on the the two, two twelve to two sixteen?
Well, that last time we were, I was in front of the commission, that was the area I thought if we, when the commission adopts the common consumption area, it has to define the boundaries.
Right.
And the city of Shawnee went for, I think, a four square blocks.
Yes.
You could have gone for, you can just use that area they're remodeling or reconstructing for a gathering place.
Right.
That could be an area. Or or you can pick and choose areas like that, or you can just say the downtown downtown historic district north of Main Street.
Okay.
So, that's just a discussion you'd have to have.
Sure. Okay, that gives us something to consider down the road. Okay, any further questions?
I have none.
I think the baby steps is the best approach that, you know, because I could see that plaza there, but also the parking lot of Chestnut where there's been discussion about the power pole, maybe some kind of venue in the future there, but I think that's good weight to act on it. The only only question that that I saw and I think the the approach with the ordinance is the way they are good. When you get into the application, it talks about the area being secured without a definition of definition of what secured is. But as you look at, if I'm if I'm reading it right, that the ordinance can be general in a blanket, but we can put more specifics in an application so that it's easier to monitor and modify. That maybe we need to define secured as being barriers, a fence, cones, you know, something.
I probably left that purposely a little bit vague, but part of the application process, I ask them to describe it and Chief Harrison will review it to ensure that I assume we're probably going to have an entrance to where they're, Jerry, can you speak to? If you receive this type of application, what the area you would like to see if alcohol is going to be served?
Yeah, we we just have to coordinate with A B C and that like Jeff said, that's so vague and entangled, it's just.
Yeah.
Best to consult an expert, but you definitely would want to have some kind of barrier with a designated entrance and you have somebody there checking IDs and that kind of thing, but I think I agree with you. I think let's let's get something going here and get some more activity in our downtown.
I figured the chief could, when we ask them to describe what they're going to do and then the chief could approve it. It takes his approval before we issue a permit to make sure we're doing it.
That's what I thought, instead of trying to get all that lined out like in an ordinance.
Yeah.
If you put it in your application, if it doesn't work, it's a lot easier to to modify than come back to us for a modification of an ordinance.
I can see how the careful description of whatever boundary or perimeter that they're trying to establish for the event is an important part of the of the application and it will be necessary for the chief to really know whether there's traffic implications or other implications that he's going to want to be aware of.
Yeah, we definitely can tweak that a little bit on the application and, I mean, we ask them to describe their area.
The application is just that. It's an application. The city will issue a permit but any restrictions it wants in the permit.
And that's where I left it for Jerry could come back and say, no, I want this fence and the entrance here and.
Right.
If it doesn't work, you can change it.
Yeah, it leaves it open. Jerry does one and feels that, hey, I need to tweak it next time to do this, then he has that option.
Sounds like you've got it covered with the way it is. Good.
On the review by, you need to add fire in there because he specifically has fire listed in the verbiage of the ordinance.
It's reviewed by all emergency services.
Okay, because it just says administration and police and public works.
But there's a sign off in there for fire, whether they need ambulance or water.
It's a work, the application is a work in progress. An ordinance is a guideline for city staff to follow.
Yeah, I like that organization that way.
And remember, the special event permit, it can be an alcohol event or non-alcohol event too. It doesn't have to be alcohol.
And we plan on doing these in-house and not bringing these back to the commission every time.
Like we do the parade permits.
Right.
Great, that would be good. All right, if there's no further questions, do I have a motion? Motions, excuse me.
I move to approve ordinance four, three, five, six, amending G dash four as last amended by ordinance number four, two, seven, zero pertaining to consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property and authorizing the issuance of special event permits in the downtown historic district.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
I move to approve ordinance four, three, five, seven, amending appendix appendix D to include an application fee for a special event permit.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried.
I move to approve ordinance four, three, five, eight, creating a special event permit for the downtown historic district.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Item H, consider setting the date of June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one for a public hearing to consider condemnation of four, twenty-six, South Sixteenth Street as dangerous and unsafe. Tyler?
City staff recommends setting a public hearing date of June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one to consider condemning four, two, six, South Sixteenth Street.
Explain to them what happened down there, Tyler.
During a recent demolition activity, the house was compromised on the east side and it is unsecured. And I have tried to reach out to the owners and they have answered phone calls and I've reminded them that I need a timeline of when they'll have it fixed so that we would be able to present it and I have not received anything from them.
Looks like possibly the foundation had been compromised when they did the demolition in that southeast corner, so.
Yeah, the picture illustrates that.
I believe the foundation in that back porch area was like that prior to.
Yeah.
Has the house pretty much, it's been uninhabitable for quite a long time, more than likely.
Yep.
There's no, you, I see the meter's blanked off, so there's no electric to it and probably not any water or gas to it either, is there?
There's no utilities to it.
Okay, so it's basically just an empty house. It's pretty much been abandoned.
Yep.
All right, well, you'll still continue to reach out to see if you can get a response.
Yes, I will.
From the property owner and see if they do come forward and either they have a plan or they don't, but we will move forward on this, so. Gentlemen, any questions?
I'm good.
Good?
I am, I'm good.
Okay, I need a motion, please.
I move to adopt a resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero one zero, setting the date of June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one at five thirty PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of four, two, six, South Sixteenth Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Thank you, Tyler. Moving along. Item I, consider approving a contract for mowing services for city-owned lots.
Mayor, as we previously told you, we were going out for a contract for the mowing services to free up our street department so that they could continue to work on the streets and do the things that they can do. We received one bid, which that's in front of you tonight and we are asking that you approve that bid with J and S Enterprises LLC for the, I believe it's eighty-five lots, mowing services here.
City-owned lots.
City-owned lots, floodlots and city properties. We are still working on the nuisance and we put that back out. We're still trying to achieve that. J and S Enterprises did give us a quote of thirty-five dollars per lot and we may need to use those services temporarily while we're waiting for the other quotes to come back in and see if we can get a lower quote for the nuisance lots, but we are working to get that handled too. So, and I believe Lacy's let you know that she is very pleased with the bid for us to be able to do that services. It's a comparable price.
When looking at the amount of city-owned property, it was eighty-five lots and I just roughly took the amount of eighteen hundred and twenty dollars. It comes out to twenty-one dollars and forty-one cents to mow, to mow those lots, which considering when you look at the employee hourly wage benefits, everything that goes along with it.
Yes.
Equipment and everything, it's considerably a lot more costly for the city employees to do that and it frees them up to do other things of more importance to the city. So, I thought that was very, very good and I did find out, hoping I get this right, I just read it before I came. I believe Lacy said there were eight hundred and ninety-four nuisance lots.
Last year.
Last year that she's identified. So, we've got quite a huge number of lots. I didn't realize it was that many.
Those are mowings.
Those are occurrences, right?
It's eight hundred and forty mowings last year.
Eight hundred and forty mowings. Okay.
So, that could be the same lot mold.
Oh, so that's not the number of lots.
So, that's not eight hundred and forty.
Okay, because I was curious.
It's eight hundred and forty. There's over thirteen hundred and some notices given out.
Okay.
Some of those were mowed, but I believe the eight hundred and forty is what we had to mow last year.
Okay, so we don't, okay, I mis, I misread that then. I was thinking that was, I thought that's a significant high number of lots and that was my question was actually how many lots, nuisance lots that that we have that the city has to continue to mow, so.
And and when we do that nuisance ordinance, it will have all of those lots listed. And so, we could pull up the last nuisance ordinance and that will have that and it will say how much it was assessed and based on the amount, you could kind of figure out how many lots.
How many lots, okay. Well, I'm glad that I misread that. I'm glad it's not eight hundred and ninety-four and I'm hoping we get some competitive bids that. And I'm hoping we get, uh, some competitive bids that, uh, at a really good price.
Mayor, if I tell you, offered to do a three-year contract with J and S at this price.
Yes.
And which we felt was very reasonable and you give a five percent discount.
Hmm, that would amount to, uh, yeah, that's, that's a nice discount.
Yes, so we're asking for that.
And I understand he came with good references.
Yes, very good references.
People were pleased with the work.
Very nice gentleman.
Where he's, uh, done work before for other, other entities within the city and other areas, so, so that's good. Um, gentlemen, any, any further questions for David?
I'm good.
A question, uh, on South Tenth Street, we have some FEMA lots on the west side of Tenth down around Edison, was that included in his bid?
Yes.
And then there were some between Ninth and Eighth.
Yes, all of those are in there.
How about the park?
The park is done by, uh, the park staff.
I wondered with that park, Ninth, South Nineteenth Street Park and Wald Park, if you included those in the contract, then it would eliminate us having to load our equipment and staff traveling that they could concentrate in, in the park and the cemetery. And since, particularly since they're gonna be on, uh, both sides of South Tenth Street and, and they're in that region, so. But it, it seemed like utilization of city staff elsewhere would.
Yeah, we definitely, if the commission desires, if you give us permission to get a price from it and.
Yeah, I, I think that would be ideal.
Or we can bring it back to you at the next meeting for those three lots.
Just as an amendment to their.
Yeah, yeah.
Contract.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be fine. That's a good point to make, Commissioner. Uh, all right, if there's no further questions, uh, I need a motion on this. Excuse me.
I move to approve mowing services with J and S Enterprise LLC for a three-year mowing contract for city-owned lots.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item J, consider authorizing the purchase of mobile and portable radio equipment for use in the Independence Police Department. Chief Harrison?
Hey, gentlemen, as you know, we've been moving through our system for the last couple of years trying to get it, uh, up to standard. And, uh, the last phase that, uh, we've been recommended to move is to replace our portable handheld radios and our mobile vehicle radios. Uh, and they were all outside of the life expectancy, uh, according to vendors that we spoke with. So you have there the bid tab and the, uh, the low bid, and then you also have, uh, because it came in well under the encumbered amount that we planned upon using, uh, you have a negotiated quantity there out to the side from the low bidder. And so we're asking to, uh, purchase that negotiated quantity from the low bidder at the price that they quoted us on that negotiated quantity there. Um, and that puts us about almost complete with the replacement project from the outset. And so then, from then forward, we go with the strategic plan that we discussed where we, uh, incrementally replace items throughout their, uh, life expectancy so that we're not making these major purchases every five or six years.
I really appreciate that strategy, Chief Harrison. That is, uh, consistent with what I would believe would be the best practice, uh, for anyone who has this type of purchase that they are trying to maintain. You stay on top of the technology, you stay on top of, uh, of, um, of, um, just minimized repair costs and otherwise stay current with the equipment that you have. So, uh, I encourage you to persist in that in whatever way you find.
Thank you. We're, we're going through the whole operation and, and pulling things out and determining what we wanna, uh, put on an asset list and then set a life expectancy to it based on that industry standards and then develop a, uh, process to go through and incrementally replace those things. So we're trying to do that with our whole operation at this point.
Excellent.
Great job, Chief. I'm glad to see that, um, you were able to accomplish this with the money that was already set aside for that, so that was good. Commissioner Kavliss, any comments?
No, no, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Well, with that, uh, I need a motion on this.
I move to authorize city staff to purchase radio equipment from Communications Express LLC for the IDP radio project in the amount of thirty-two thousand, six dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Going back to two items that we have, uh, brought to consider for commission action. Uh, this was item E on the consent agenda, consider awarding the project of an ADA accessible restroom located within Kitty Land at Ralph Mitchell Zoo to BG Consultants. Angela, how are you this evening?
I'm doing good, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
So for this particular project, we only had one bidder to design the restroom there at Kitty Land, the ADA restroom, and so that was BG Consultants at, for seventy-five hundred dollars.
Let's see, he had included some optional, uh, services, uh, optional architect, engineering, construction, administration fee and topographical and utility survey fee. Um, first with the topographical and utilities. That's gonna be needed, uh, to establish the grade and flow of water around so you can set the finished floor elevation, but it's also, um, I think with the ADA, the sidewalks that Trans Systems, uh, with their work will also be doing a survey. So the two could be tied together that we, we need the information that they're calling out, but I don't think it has to go through them to get the information for them. So, uh, I'd visit with Kelly and, and Dave and they thought maybe that was already in the works, but if not, you know, we can handle it separately like we're doing on phase two with the city hall and, uh, Fire EMS and make sure that the survey is large enough that you can use it for future work in the, in the park, you know, uh, tying it back to the, uh, the duck pond or, you know, so I think we need to get that information for them. The, uh, construction administration fee, the services that they're talking about there is the, uh, review of the project once it gets into construction. And also then the contractor would be required to submit information on the products they're incorporating in the building to confirm that they comply with the project specifications. And they would be reviewing the contractor's application for payment justifying for the, the completed work, that it is being completed and the application is appropriate for the work completed. Be a great benefit for you to take any of that responsibility, uh, away and, you know, for you or Tyler or David, be a great, uh, protection for your interests there and the city's interests. So, you know, I think that at, at this time, we should also look at, at, uh, at least extending and including in their contract, the, uh, architect, engineer, construction, administration fee, which I think it brings it to twelve thousand dollars. But they really haven't detailed the extent of their, uh, services that they're providing. They provided the number, but like how many trips they're gonna make to do inspections and that, so. You know, uh, Commissioners, I think we should definitely include both of those in the, the, the fee amount, but then, uh, in our motion authorize that, uh, we give staff authority to have the consultant prepare a, a contract for their services. And at that time, they would outline the details in the construction administration fee so we could see exactly what they're going to provide to us for the four thousand, five hundred dollars.
Would that come back to us then for review at that time or?
May thirteenth.
Yeah.
May thirteenth.
May thirteenth, okay. How about that?
It was gonna come back anyway with the contract, but.
Yeah, I think the thought was, you know, we're gonna get the architecture and they were gonna go bid out all of the whole project, but then it would just be, uh, Trans Systems reviewing it, so, uh, it'd probably be better for the architect to review what he's designed and I think that's the thought of why it wasn't put in.
Okay, well.
And, so.
I think we'd be better to have the designer.
Yeah.
I know we'll probably pay a little more.
Yeah.
But we're, we're talking about different disciplines, civil.
Yes.
Versus construction, I think you'd get better representation to stay with the architect. I was pretty impressed with his resume and I think it would help.
Yep.
Help you guys a lot to have him on board with you instead of just civil.
And we do have a survey and topo that Sean said he would be willing to share with the architect.
Oh, great.
Good.
So, we already have that.
Great, okay.
All right, so unless there's no further questions, need a motion?
I move that we approve to award the project for ADA accessible restrooms located within Kitty Land at Ralph Mitchell Zoo to BG Consultants and authorize the city staff to, uh, have the consultant prepare a contract for architectural services in the amount of twelve thousand dollars for design and con- construction administration services.
Got it. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Item F, consider authorizing Four Paws Zoo Brew for twenty-twenty-one as well as adopting a blanket authorization for future Zoo Brew events.
So Commissioners, this is the annual fundraiser that Four Paws, the Friends of Riverside Park and Ralph Mitchell Zoo, uh, put on in the summer. It's typically the first Friday of June every year. And so this serves as their big fundraiser that they are able to do auction items. Um, they do a dinner as well as serve alcohol during that timeframe. So Beth Chaney, who is one of the directors of Four Paws, is here to answer any questions. Um, that way, if there's anything that you ask that I wouldn't be able to answer since I haven't seen this event yet in person, that, that you would have those answers available to you.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that I, I, uh, questioned was the, uh, adoption of a blanket authorization. Uh, I'd like the, the event, it's a great fundraiser for Four Paws and anytime we can bring that much attention to the park and zoo is, is a definite plus. But I feel that, uh, each year it should come to the city staff just so they're aware of any modifications, any changes, uh, you wanna expand, you wanna change a location, any requirements. I, I, I think we should always bring it back and it could go to a consent agenda for commission action, but it just gives the city the, the contact since, uh, Four Paws is not a, a governed body by the city, but a, an, a support entity that that communication, it, communicating ahead of time is much better than, uh, having a problem come up. So, you know, it gives, uh, Kelly, David, uh, the fire chief, police chief, information about what's going on, that if we need to modify things, so. The only thing I suggest is that we eliminate the blanket authorization.
I also think that Zoo Brew is a, a, a wonderful fundraiser, it does a lot of good for the, uh, the zoo and it, and it does bring a lot of positive attention to the, uh, the efforts that you're making out there. So I hope that it can continue. Um, I don't have any problem with amending this motion to just authorize twenty-twenty-one's event.
All right, thank you. I, I have no questions on this. Thank you very much. Um, I need a motion on this.
I move we authorize, we approve to authorize Zoo Brew for the twenty-twenty-one year. Sorry, what?
What, what we really need is for you to authorize that we can close the zoo at noon on that Friday.
At noon on Friday? What is the date?
June the fourth.
June the fourth?
Okay.
I couldn't hear. What was, uh, June the fourth, you need authorization to do what?
She wants to close the zoo at noon.
Oh, okay.
Not the playground and all that, just the zoo.
The zoo.
Zoo area, okay. All right, so we incorporate that into the motion?
So I believe the, the amended, uh, motion is, I move we approve to authorize Zoo Brew for the twenty-twenty-one year and, uh, approve closing the zoo at twelve P M, June the fourth for preparations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. All right, moving on to item number seven, reports. Uh, gentlemen, do you have any? Any comments on any, any of that, the new city license? We had a chance to look at those.
I have no questions.
City, are you good? City board minutes, are we good?
Do we need to vote on the license?
No, the, only the cereal malt beverage licenses, um, we periodically put them, them in when we get some new ones just so you're aware of the, the new licenses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh, if there's no further questions, then we move to item number eight, city manager comments?
Um, David has an update on AWOL.
Uh, I was contacted by AWOL this week and Joy, Dr. Barta's wife, uh, there was a memorial fund and they would like to, uh, add in, extend the fencing a little bit on the north side and separate the pens, uh, so that the small dogs have a place to run and the large dogs have their area so that they're not intermingled and we don't have any issues. And then she would also like to plant three trees, uh, there. One, uh, away from the building but in the pen to provide the animals some shade while they're out in the, uh, runs and then a couple around the building and just a memorial from Dr. Barta that she would like to do at AWOL. And AWOL is fine with this, they just wanted to make you guys aware of it and make sure they had your blessing that it was okay to proceed.
Yeah.
And they're not making any structural changes, it's just fencing and trees, so. We just wanna make sure you're aware of it.
All right, good. It's a good idea to separate the, with the two pens and, and the trees, um, add to the, to the overall appearance of the facility, so I think that's good. Thank you.
And then, um, we had another one, um, actually this, I've got an update since then. We've had five-hundred-and-twenty-five surveys filled out since a little bit before two o'clock today. Um, in the, when we originally did the strategic plan, the initial survey that was really short, we had five-hundred. So we're already exceeded that and this is a much longer survey. Um, most of them are mailing them in and our staff are, uh, entering those. And, um, so the majority of them are coming in that way, they're sending them back in on the postage-paid envelopes that we included. And so that's open until the twenty-eighth, so anyone that hasn't filled it out, um, can do so. And then he did give me some percentages of participation based on areas. And, um, so far the northwest has the highest. And so far, the northwest has the highest percentage rate right now. But it's followed by some other ones, central west and things like that. So I wanted to give you an update on that. And I don't have a slide for it, but I just got an email right before the meeting, actually after the meeting, from Shift Sector, wanted to thank everybody for a successful event. They were really excited about the turnout and said it went great and they can't wait for 2022. So I wanted to pass that along to you.
They had a great turnout. I went out Saturday and there was, yeah, there were tons of cars and tons of people out there and they were really enjoying the event. It was kind of neat to see the exotic automobiles out there. I've never seen so many Lamborghinis in one place at one time. So it's not a common occurrence in Independence. But this total here on this, that also includes those that have been filled online also.
The online, that's all the responses entered, including the online ones. Basically, what staff is doing is they're taking the surveys and they're just following the same thing anybody else would fill them in and they're putting in the responses.
Okay.
And the housing authorities have been helping us do that because Lydia got pretty overwhelmed. So, but they're doing a really good job getting those in.
All right, so my comment tonight would be if you have this survey, sit down on your table and you're getting around, you have not sat down and spent the time to fill it out, we would appreciate that you would do it. Fill out the portions that you feel you have input on and it's a paid return envelope.
Yes.
So you're not out any money, but I encourage you to fill it out, turn it in. The survey closes on April 28th, so there's still time there, but do not procrastinate.
Yes.
Be proactive and fill it out, drop it in the mail. We need your input.
Yes, and we, while we'd love for them to fill out the entire thing, if they don't have time, they just want to hit on the highlights, on the things that mean something to them. We just want to, we just want their feedback.
Yes, we greatly appreciate it.
And with Love Independence this Saturday, the Clerk's Office is doing some activities with that. So the Clerk's Office will not be open on Friday, so I wanted to let you know that as well.
All right, Kelly, anything else?
I think that's it unless you have any questions or anything.
Gentlemen, are we good?
Good.
We're good. All right, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Hayes, do you have any comments for tonight?
I just want to elevate once again that it's important that we stay on top of the efforts to market Temporary City Hall Building D. That's going to be a very significant portion of our success and also has a significant amount of risk associated with it. So we really need to be working on that steadily and making progress.
And just, you know, we have to wait until we get that information, as Vance indicated, before we can move forward. But if there's something you want us to do different than that, other than what Vance suggested, then we just need that feedback.
Do we already have a summary of what this marketing document is going to look like?
No, because we're needing to get the area and, like I said, I haven't even got the quote yet for Cornerstone on doing that survey information. And apparently through this process, they're going to tell us what pieces to market.
Okay.
And then we will put all that together. But if there's something else you want us to do.
The problem that when they did the initial design of the Fire EMS building, they didn't take into consideration the location of the addition, how close it was to existing construction. And they have to redesign. The addition to-
I didn't really grasp that from what Vance had said.
Yeah.
And back then, we had a different architect involved in that project. And the thought process of putting it where it was, was it was going to be temporary and it was going to be relocated to sanitation because they, that's the funds that were used to pay for, pay for it. And that architect was thinking that there would be an addition off the Building D for the apparatus bay off in that empty lot. And that was the thought process when it was placed there. And of course, all that's changed since then.
Well, no, when Ian or Chris designed the addition, they didn't take in consideration how close the code allows them to build to the old. There's one structure southwest of the main building.
Okay, you're talking about the addition onto the current apparatus bay.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you meant why that was where it was and maybe that's not the best place.
No, that, they didn't look at how close they could build to that building. So they'll have to modify to establish a property line between the two. So that's part of the delay in getting that information.
The setback is called out and it's not, it wasn't sufficient to meet that requirement.
It looks like it's maybe twenty or thirty feet, I don't know, but it should be a little more. Feel like-
That's an O and P zone, if you're talking setbacks.
Right. But depending on the fire rating between the buildings and they have to establish that it's a shift of some of the spaces, but.
And I apologize, I misinterpreted that.
Do I?
I apologize, I misinterpreted your comment. I was thinking differently.
No. I wasn't, I wasn't clear.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hayes, for your comments. Commissioner Keflis, do you have any comments? I just, I just have one. I was attending the Shift Sector and I was also attending the barbecue pitmaster cook-off. And I had a chance to visit with some of the pitmasters in the parking lot on West Main of Newton's True Value. And to make a long story short, some of them were from the immediate area or surroundings and had been to Independence before. But I ran into a couple that had not been here before, pitmasters, and they remain. I asked them what they thought of the city. They were, for the first time here, they were very impressed by the appearance of the city. But what impressed them even more was that everywhere they went, they were welcomed. If they had questions about something, people were very friendly, very open. Asked where you, are you from, you know, oh, you're part of the pitmaster competition. And they were very impressed by that community being very open to people that are here first time. So it's very important to us that we continue to make, present a good presence to people that are new to the community. And their comment was, you know, where we live, we don't get that even in our own hometown. So that really made me feel good about being a part of Independence. And I've passed that on to other people already. But I want people to understand your attitude and how you present yourself. We all represent the city of Independence. So, you know, always try to be on your best behavior and present your best appearance forward. It does mean something to people that are traveling here. And I encouraged everyone to come back next year. And I just got a text earlier today, they're planning on coming back the week of April 21st and 22nd and making it bigger and better. So anyway, that's all I have. All right, David, do we have any public concerns?
No.
All right, then, the favorite part of the meeting is adjournment. I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you.